Moment of silence. First of all, I would like to wish everybody happy holidays. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, to your families. I hope that we have a very comfortable, happy holiday with your families. Especially during the Thanksgiving, with your prayer and thanks for having your families. And also to remember those that we have lost during the holiday season, which is a very, very difficult time. And I have Counselor Howell in prayer. Also, any of our staff who have lost family members or ourselves. And I would also like to turn it over at this moment to Counselor Howell.
Moment of silence. Again, you know, we need to remember our loved ones that have passed. One other part of our lives, we need to remember all of our men and women in the conflict areas of our nation and also in the world. Keep them in your prayers, keep them, ask the Lord to keep them safe. And keep the families that have lost their loved ones also safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And then approval of the agenda is presented.
Second.
motion.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Yulivri Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey and a second by Counselor Yulivri Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes for October the ninth work session and October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular session.
Madam Mayor, I'm over approval of the minutes for October ninth work session and October sixteenth, regular session. There were no errors.
Okay. Second.
motion. Counselor Yulivri Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey and a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, the next item on the agenda is mayor's appointments and reports.
I don't have any reports or permits at this time, but I will be working on those by Friday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor's recognitions and proclamations.
I would like to call Virginia Marivo to discuss briefly the Top Hat Awards. Good evening, Hillary.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilor.
Good evening.
So, once again, we got some nominations into the Top Hat Awards. The New Mexico Hospitality Association puts these on yearly for all tourism and hospitality throughout the state. So, we have, they had one hundred and twenty nominations this year in the different categories. And I'm happy to report that we had three finalists. We got a finalist for Fiesta's of Las Vegas again, our second award, two years in a row. This one, we didn't get top five or anything like that. We did get top ten, but we were against the Special Olympics and some of these major events that happened in New Mexico this year, which I can understand. The other one that we got was top three, and it was for Tourism Professional of the Year, and that was for myself. And then we have a third one, which I don't have because he took it home, and it was for Hospitality Professional of the Year, and he actually ended up winning that category, and it was for Alan Elphill. And he took home the trophy for that category. So, we got three awards this year, top ten, top three, and a winner.
Thank you very much. And we have, thank you, necessary photos. I don't know if the optic has been contacted, or you have, so you have the photos as well?
Yeah, we did contact them the following day.
Okay, thank you for your continued successes and also your hard work and accomplishments. We appreciate it.
And thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Any other recognitions or proclamations, Madam?
Oh, that's it. I have it. Thank you very much.
The next item is public input. The first one is Mr. William Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you?
Fine.
I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you again on a very important matter, that matter being the litigation that has divided us for about sixty years right now. This issue of litigation has already cost us millions of dollars in payments to lawyers and experts. This litigation continues to drain our financial resources that could be better serve our community elsewhere. I'm sure that if you closely examine the impacts of this litigation, you will see that the whole community has lost. We have lost water rights and the potential benefits of those water rights to provide. We have lost an agricultural economy and almost completely destroyed our Aseca's, the very fabric that enabled Las Vegas to exist from its early beginnings. More importantly, we have lost respect. Respect for seniority of water rights has been replaced by litigation. You may know that water allocation in New Mexico is based on seniority. This is exactly what this litigation is about. Years of litigation allowed our community to enjoy what was known as a Pogla Water Right. However, in two thousand four, the New Mexico Supreme Court overturned an earlier decision and remanded the case back into District Court with instructions to the court to fashion an equitable remedy to resolve this matter between the parties. Fifteen years of remand litigation between the parties continue to cost us millions of dollars. Finally, last year, a recommendation was made by the special master to Judge Westler. That recommendation was that the city of Las Vegas pay one point seven million dollars to the members of the Aseca's. In exchange, the city of Las Vegas would receive a senior priority of eighteen thirty-five for twelve hundred acre feet of their twenty-six hundred acre feet it owns. Instead, the Aseca's had proposed, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. The Aseca's members disagree with the proposed settlement. Instead, the Aseca's had proposed the development of a sharing agreement that would delineate how water along the Gaienas would be allocated. The city of Las Vegas attorneys have expressed disagreement with the proposed settlement as far over the payment amount. Last month, Judge Westler filed a letter with all the parties at PNM that he anticipates entering an order in early November. As you can see, we're now in late November, almost. He still hasn't. To resolve the objections to the special master's report, he still has not done that. In his letter, Judge Westler also indicated that he believes that a joint resolution of an equitable remedy offers the best path for a fair and workable solution.
Three minutes.
I want to finish this one.
He further encouraged, thank you, Mayor. He further encourages the parties to find a solution if possible. The Aseca leadership has always promoted our custom of sharing. Sharing water in times of plenty and in times of short has been our way of life. This was the norm until the drought of the nineteen fifties, where severe drought hit this area. At this time, honoring seniority of the Aseca's by the Arapudo Company and perhaps the inability of the parties to find a remedy then is what brought us where we are today. I can tell you, from nineteen ninety-three to present, the Aseca's leadership has approached every administration of the city of Las Vegas with the possibility of ending this litigation by agreeing to share water. Of all contacted, Mayor Marcus was the only one open to such an agreement and decided to take a chance with it. We signed some sharing agreements with the city at that point. Those sharing agreements that we reached then under the Marcus administration continue today to be the base document as to how we share water along the Gaienas. The Aseca's also indicated in these agreements that they would never call priority on the city of Las Vegas and consequently see no need for an eighteen thirty-five priority. Accordingly, we have been sharing water since the Marcus administration under these documents with modifications and improvements that we've made over the years. There's still no work that needs to be done on that document, but basically, it's a workable document. Today, we find ourselves, now we have a difficult decision to make. Do we wish to end this litigation, or do we continue paying the attorneys and the experts? And do we make appeals to the courts? I can tell you that the Aseca believes that a negotiated settlement is possible and that the priority sought by the city is not necessary, especially since the Aseca's have indicated that they would never exercise this seniority. I strongly encourage to follow Judge Westler's suggestion, engage the Aseca leadership to find a negotiated settlement for sharing water, again, ask the Aseca to examine the benefits of such an agreement. Remember, the claim to seniority is not necessary, and the reason for continued litigation is not either. We have made many improvements to infrastructure with our tax dollars. We have bought storage at Story Lake, we've pitched Bradner. We operated under one reservoir for five years in the middle of a drought without any conflicts on the river, largely because of the sharing agreement that we were working with. We now have Bradner on board, we have Story Lake, a thousand acre feet of storage. We see no need for the eighteen thirty-five priority, basically because the chances of the city running out of water are almost nonexistent, especially since the Aseca's have indicated that they would never call seniority on the Aseca's. With that, Mayor, I thank you, and I have attached a copy of the judge's letter to us as well as our response. I ask for your support in asking the judge to allow us time to negotiate a settlement. It can be reached, it's workable, it's within our reach. The Aseca's are not asking for payment of one point seven million dollars, and I'm sure if you discuss that with the leadership, you will see that much for us would be necessary to really get the Aseca's up and functioning. With that, I thank you, and I'll go to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Emily, could you please get our city attorney and provide the council with a briefing, a written brief, of what the status is of everything that has been claimed here to date to make certain even. We're all clear on that here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go. The next person on public input is Mr. Ray Daigles.
Thank you for allowing me to address you.
Good evening.
I'm Ray Daigles, the Mauro for the Los Vehiles Aseca, and I realized today, as I was trying to think of what I would say, is that I've been the Mauro for more than fifty-five years. My father's senior was the Mauro, but all of the ranchers, since I was too young to drive, would make horse gates, and I would manage that river from Gaienas, the Royal College, all the way to Williams. And I learned how to interact with those farmers and those adults. It was a very positive experience in every way. And today, when I was trying to collect my thoughts together, my comments would be less factual than William, but reflected. And I couldn't help how municipal governments and societies can get into things like Vietnam and Afghanistan and just waste blood and treasure in our youth over nothing, and it takes years and years before we can reflect and see how ignorant and senseless that was. I couldn't help but draw parallels between that and the litigation that we have had with the city for all these years. We've spent conservatively four million, probably six million, in litigation. We've given millions to story project and reoccurring storage agreements for water we've never used or ever needed. And even though we've been fighting over this eighteen thirty-five priority, no one has gained one drop of water either way that they would have if there had been no litigation. And I remember that PNM years ago used to run or manage our water, but it wasn't politicized. So, we've never had a problem, any litigation or shortage of water through periods of drought. And as soon as PNM gave it to the city, it became politicized. And right away, we started being in the courts. And I also see that the county had almost thirty percent of its economy associated with agriculture. And from that time, there was a steady drop in terms of agriculture, the sail bourn, hay, organic vegetables, crops. And so, there's been the kind of harm that we saw in our families in Vietnam. I see the kind of harm that this community has endured, its blood and treasure over this litigation between the city and the Aseca's, and no one has gained anything from it. And so, I hope that this will be an opportunity that we stop the litigation and that we put an end. It would be a great thing for this tenure of the City Council to be the council that put an end to this litigation. The eighteen thirty-five priority, it's much like Vietnam. The city has hinged its litigation on the eighteen thirty-five priority. And I talked to an old time or anybody with common sense, I mean, it's the most ignorant thing you could think of. Because if the water level is low enough so that the city has to take it all, it is too low for us to push down the ditch to irrigate. So, we don't need a law or the state engineer or the water master to tell us not to take water. There's no water. And even if we were to block and keep the city without getting any water, it would still not be enough water for us to irrigate and crops. I know that people talk about certain agriculture systems, and the body is, it's a beautiful system. The worst thing you can do is mess with it. I have a master's in geology beyond my experience as a rancher, and we are blessed with a shallow water table. And those years passed because the Los Vehiles ditch was the highest contour. We used to split the river and let half the river go down our ditch, and the starken dip would take all of the water underground right back into the river before the other diversions, before the Ramal diversion and all the other ditches. And it would take one or two days for me to irrigate ninety acres because it was being irrigated underneath, not to mention the bees, the vegetables, the orchards, the orchard grass, and all the benefits of the environment of having that water percolate through the environmental system. And when we got a water master and they started these rotations and they kept the rotating schedule and the ditch was not running all the time, I raised a lot of fruit. First thing I know is that the bees took off because they needed the water. That lovely picnic orchard grass got taken over by drought-resistant thorns, you know, those pink things, just, they're just awful, okay? And not only that, but it would take me almost four or five days to irrigate my fields because all that time, the water was percolating through the water table, irrigating, nurturing the environment, and going right back into the river to be used, retarding evaporation and making the best beneficial use of our river. So, the best, the worst thing that we have done to, in terms of closure, I know I need to stop. The worst thing that we have done to this beautiful thing that God has given us in the form of this real Gaienas basin is to fight over it, okay? If we hadn't fought over it, everybody would get all the water they need, okay? Our environment is going to rot, our economy is going to rot. And because we're trying to manage it, it's negating all the advantages that we were blessed with in terms of the water table and nurturing the ecology and the community.
Mr. Daigles, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Daigles. The next person is Ms. Kathleen Dudley. Then we'll go on to Mr. Gabe Estado.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for doing us to be here this afternoon. I'm going to read to you the letter. You have a copy of it as a mayor and council and for the files, but our people behind me don't know this, and I'm going to read this letter. It was, I received it on October the seventh. This is an open letter to the parties in the matter of the equitable remedy to be awarded to the city of Las Vegas following the reversal of the Pogla Water Rights doctrine. This was a sixty-year mistake that they made with the Pogla Water Rights that was issued to the city of Las Vegas by the Supreme Court, the highest court in the land. Made a sixty-year mistake, and it took them that long to correct it in two thousand and four. Since then, we have had litigation that both Mr. William and Ray have mentioned to you. And the parties involved are supposed to be sharing the water and the efforts, and the attempt to reach a mutual agreement proposed regarding the equitable remedy to this case was a resolution that was not reached prior to the special master's report. People since the special master turned this report to the judge, William explained to you, everything has happened after that. You've got water, you've got wet water, you have storage, you have Bradner down back on in operation. Last year, you didn't even use your allotted water out of the river. I think that proves to you that now, with all the resources you have, this is what a priority call would entail, is that you are so dry that you need all the water in the river, and you don't need priority call because we have already agreed. It takes, we say it takes water to push water, that's hydrology. And if we don't have enough water to irrigate, we're wasting it. And if the city needs water, we agreed as a Aseca's that we would not call a priority call, and you would have the water, whatever water is in the river would come to the citizens behind me and the rest of the citizens that are on your tax throughout the city. The court continues, the judge is to me begging us, the court continues to believe in a joint resolution for an equitable remedy offers the best path for a fair, workable, and enduring settlement of this case. This is to me very important. With the recent development, he knows, he already got the water master's report, and since the water master turned it in, we haven't resolved anything. And the recent developments suggest that a resolution might be possible. The court wishes to encourage the efforts between the parties to reach a settlement. People that fly in that is here, the judge is in our favor, what are we negating on? The only people that are benefiting from this are attorneys. This letter was sent to proud attorneys. Can you imagine, three hundred dollars an hour, you're talking about thirty-six hundred dollars an hour for what? This has gone for sixty years, there's been no settlement. We need a common sense people, the attorneys work for you. You don't work for the damn attorneys. They work for you. And we need, I think, that fly in that is here, the judge is begging us to come up with a settlement. And I think that the majority of you people are willing to do that. Therefore, the court invites the parties to modify the court. If reason exists, the reason is there, the reason exists that we settle this issue, and to delay entry of order to allow for the parties to propose a joint equitable remedy. We're asking over and about the time he gave us the, since the letter came, to settle this issue before November the fifteenth. We sent a letter, you have it, asking the judge to give us another thirty days so we can get together. This has been going on in our Aseca's for centuries, and we all lived with that concept, and now what is holding us back?
Thank you, Mr. Estado. I appreciate the comments here.
This, this has been ordered by Judge Westler, the judge that will be making a decision if we can't agree. Nobody knows what a decision will be, but if we come with an equitable response to the judge's wishes, I think we could settle this.
Much obliged.
And I applaud your nods, I appreciate that, because I'm probably the oldest one in the Aseca's. I've sat with this thing since the day that the public service got the Pogla Water Right. Our agriculture economy has gone downhill ever since, and we lost a lot of citizens out of the city when we had water situations, water issues, that we didn't have water. We resolved, I think, most of those, except that we had to do a judge.
Do we have any else, anybody else in public?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Estado. The next item, the next person is Mr. Lalo Sanchez. Good evening, Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and all you other people. My first item here tonight is that I really don't know what the problem is with Maria Gilberti. She continues to monitor my water meter. I don't know what she's trying to get out of it, go over water fountain or what it is that she's trying to get out of it, but she continues to check my water meter constantly since the last time that I was falsely accused of having a water leak she has checked or that I know of, four different times. What the problem is, I don't know. On November, November, November the twenty-first at four P.M., there was an individual that went to go check my meter, and just out of good fortune, I happened to see him, and I went and I asked, "What are you doing?" And he said, "I'm checking your meter." And I said, "Why?" He said, "Because Maria Gilberti ordered me to." And I said, "Well, why did she order you to check my meter?" She says, "I don't know. She said that the owner of the property requested it." I'm the owner of the property. I never requested such a thing, so I have no idea why it is that she's having my meter checked. Is she looking for reasons to falsely accuse me again of having water leaks or what? I don't know. But this needs to stop. We already know that she falsely accuses not only me, but a few other individuals of having water leaks, and now we know that she's even a liar? I mean, why did she accuse me of making the request of having my meter checked when I never did? So, this needs to stop. This needs to stop. We don't need to have employees like that within our government or within our city that is continuing to be corrupted. I don't know what the problem is that there is so much corruption within our society. We found out, I heard today, about Governor Susana Martinez, where she was corrupted and ended up issuing citation, not citations, but awards ideas from lawsuits to individuals that were never reported. We're corrupted from top to bottom, the governor, our mayor, city council members, the police department, judges, the district. The governor, our mayor, city council members, the police department, judges, the district attorneys. I mean, where is it going to stop? What happened to honest people? What happened that, what's in the water that we're getting so much corruption going on? What happened to humanity? What happened, what happened to us? Can't we get straightened out and realize that we need to get back to where we were once in, in the human race to where we can trust each other? I can remember when we used to go in the summertime and sleep, go to bed with our doors unlocked, unclosed, because we trusted everybody. Now today, she have to sit in, in the bed or whatever with a shotgun, make sure that nobody comes in unexpectedly. It's ridiculous, it's totally ridiculous. I said it once before and I'll say it again, please. Only God knows when you're going, but it's up to you, each individual, when you're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
With due respect, I'd like to address this. First of all, if Mr. Sanchez can recall, he's come to the city council meetings on numerous occasions requesting some resolve regarding his water. So if, in all defense to the staff, if your water's being checked, it's probably because you asked for it. So let's continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item is presentation, we're going on, moving on to presentations, and we have a presentation by Chief, Chief Del.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I may preface this by saying, the pride I have in introducing these two men can only be surpassed by the pride of their families. With that, I'd like to call forward Officer Clint Sandoval and Officer Moises.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, may I introduce the two new shining stars of the city of Las Vegas? They endured 16 weeks of basic police officer training, and if I may say, Officer Sandoval was the class leader for the majority of the session, and Officer Koka was the fastest runner in the class.
Welcome to the city of Las Vegas. Please be safe, and we appreciate your service.
Chief Del.
All the happy safety.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
And to the governing body and the citizens of Las Vegas, these two men have pledged to put themselves in the gap between evil and us.
Thank you very much, Julie, congratulations. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the city manager's report. We're going to be having our presentation for the utilities, but before that, I just want to make a couple of announcements. We are looking at December the 5th, which is a Thursday, for the tree lighting ceremony on Douglas, and the reason behind that is we may still have football games, we still have one of the schools that is in the finals. They'll be playing, I believe, on Saturday, and of course, if they win, if they're victorious, then they move on. And so we didn't want to interfere with any of, of the, of the activities for the school districts. And then on December the 14th, we'll be conducting our light parade. And if you have any issues or any questions, please give us a call and we'll, and we can dialogue a little bit about it. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Gilberti on the presentation of the 2019 Water, Wastewater and Solid Waste Utility Rate Assessment Study by StanTech project manager, Georgette Aron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to present Georgette Aronow and Lauren Howe from StanTech. StanTech, they're going to present on the rate assessment study. Just a little bit of a refresher, the purpose is to review the city of Las Vegas rates and rate structure, along with our capital improvement plan, our master plans, for both, for water, wastewater and solid waste, and to be able to provide recommendations and scenarios to ensure that our revenues meet the city's operations and maintenance expenditures, needs. The consultants are prepared to answer questions, preferably at the end of the presentation if possible, as many of your questions may be answered as we go throughout the presentation. So again, Georgette and Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thanks for letting us come and present the initial preliminary findings from our work with the city. We've been working on this project for maybe about eight months, eight or nine months now, and so we're excited to sort of bring all of the work effort together tonight and give you an idea of where we are. The purpose, though, really for tonight is to bring you up to speed and, and get your feedback and some direction at the end. So our agenda is to give a little bit of background, very little really, and then dive right into the financial plan and proposed rate adjustments for each of the three utilities, the water fund, the sewer or wastewater fund, and solid waste, and talk about miscellaneous fees and charges, specifically the possibility of a system development or connection fee. And then throughout, we're going to share some benchmarking rate comparisons. It seems like it's a little. All right, so in terms of the background, yeah, I don't know how you fix that, sorry. Sorry about that, little delay. Make sure everybody can see the full screen there. All right, so in terms of the background, the last rate study was, as I understand, completed in 2011, 2012. We were not the consultants of that study. The drivers for this current study are, one to start with, to look at providing adequate funding for each of the funds, to make sure that over the next five to 10 years, that the systems are self-sustaining and can meet all of the operational and capital improvement needs. Also, to make sure that there are adequate reserves, so that the city's well-prepared in the case of any capital emergency repairs. For example, we also want to make sure that we, we look at, not only are the rates in alignment with the funding needs, but also they are affordable, as, as much as can be. And then finally, the current, 2018 was the last year of, for your current rate structure, any adjustments for water and wastewater, and I believe 2015 for solid waste. So this is where your rates are now, or they would stay flat without any further adjustments or approvals by the council. All right, so did I, excuse me, dive right into the water enterprise. So here's a synopsis of the projection of expenses and current revenues over the next 10 years. So the stacked bar chart shows the various expense categories for the water fund with operate, operations and maintenance, debt service, transfers, cash funded capital, and then the, the line, it looks black on the screen up there, but that is where existing revenues currently are. So if you made no changes for the water fund, you know, the, it's pretty good for the few years, but then in the later years, the expenses start to exceed the revenues. A lot of what's driving for each of these funds are the need for capital improvements, and we spend a lot of time reviewing the master plans and technical reports to really ensure that we had an accurate projection of capital project needs going forward. And so this is a summary of the water enterprise capital projections in terms of what's needed and what's anticipated that would be funded in the rates. Overall, the CIP priorities were estimated over the 10-year period of approximately 26 and a half million dollars. And, however, the city has been successful in the past of receiving state funding for some of the project needs. And so not only, so part of this gap in terms of what's actually funded, so the difference between the line and the bar charts, that's a diff, well, so what's assumed funded in the rate analysis is 12.6 or 40% of the needs, and the difference between the bars and the lines is assumed to be funded ideally by the state or other funding sources as they might come available. So there's, there's two parts of that. One is that it's unlikely that the rates could and still be affordable fully fund the needed CIP improvements. And so that amount was brought down in order to, to keep rates at an affordable level, and with the intention of being as aggressive as you can in terms of seeking alternative funding sources. And if those aren't available, it's possible that projects would just need to be deferred out longer. So we're going to present two basic scenarios tonight for the water plan, and it's not to say that you couldn't choose something else, but this is sort of how we framed, came, came to think about the options. So the first one, which we call scenario one, assumes the CIP execution at 40%, and what that shows is that you don't need to make any rate adjustments for the water fund in fiscal year '20 or '21. And then thereafter, we estimate a 4% annually increase in your rate revenues or rate requirement. And then the next alternative scenario.
So the 4% is assumed to largely take care of inflation.
So inflation and to meet that 12 and a half million dollars. And in this second scenario, it's a lower CIP execution rate at 28%, and that shows a decrease in the first year, actually, like lowering the rates, and then afterwards increasing them by 3%. And then this is actually closer to the inflation rate. So, you know, as I said earlier, the, the CIP improvements are really a critical piece of this analysis. It really ends up being a huge driver for the rate analysis.
Let me interrupt you.
Sure.
First of all, it is my understanding and the council's understanding that the directive that was given was to produce lowering residential rates.
Yes.
And for that impact to happen within the 2020 year, we were hoping in January. I have reviewed this, and I'm certain the council has, that is not at all what you have presented to us today. We just heard from the Secas about all the wonderful things that have happened with the Ratcha story, to the repair of Bradner. I don't believe that we need a repair of Peterson at this point in time, and you have misstated some statements here today that we need to move forward with other repairs. Peterson was never part of the Bradner reservoir repair. What we need to focus on is the infrastructure repairs. That's what we need to focus on. We're not seeing that. And this proposal, in my eyes, and I'm certain in the majority of the eyes of the council, is entirely inadequate and not what we had requested. And I believe that the council made themselves clear as to what was expected. And we appreciate your presentation. I have so many questions, so many concerns that are not consistent, not only with the 20-year plan, but with the 40-year plan which has been proposed. None of those numbers are in here. We, as a council, whether I am here or not, whether this council is here or not and re-elected, cannot continue to penalize the residents of this community. It was harsh. It was a harsh penalty, a harsh rate increase. I voted against it, and our previous councilor's father, Valmetto, voted against it at the time. It was wrong. It was immoral, and it continues to be immoral. We have to do what's right for this constituency. We are hurting our residents. If you look at our landscaping, we have pretty much gone from antigrass to zero or extra steeple. We can't afford the water. Then we have the penalty within your proposed recommendation of the 2000, once they hit the 2000 and over, the residents of this community are being punished essentially for a higher rate increase. And what you're proposing here today, I'm sorry, I appreciate what you've done, but it is not the directive that was given to our utility director and the consultant who was here today. So I think that, do we let her continue, or do we bring Maria up and have Maria discuss and explain to us who missed the mark? That's exactly what's going on here today. All due respect to you, I appreciate your presentation, I really do, but we missed the mark.
So, yeah, maybe there needs to be further discussion on that. So this scenario actually does show a decrease in the rates?
It gives us a 4% two years from now, and then a 3% after.
Actually, this is.
We're, we're, we're the savings to the people.
It is actually in this current fiscal year, or the first fiscal year of this, that this would get implemented. So there's a couple of other things. So my understanding was to do an independent review of the needs of the city. Now, you could choose to disregard that independent analysis.
We completely understand that.
Right, totally within.
And I think the council's prepared to do that as well.
But we, we feel obligated to, you know, share with you the findings that we made, that there are, beyond just the water supply needs of the city, you have aging pipelines that the city, as I understand it, is constantly reacting to in terms of water line breaks, sewer line breaks, influent infiltration issues.
And our cash reserve is the healthiest it's ever been.
Yeah, for the water fund it is, not necessarily for the sewer fund. So the sewer fund has largely been neglect, not neglected, but ignored at, because there were so many immediate needs for the water fund, as, as I understand it. So, you know, I think that this, this scenario shows that, you know, your water fund is, is well managed, it's pretty solid in terms of the financials, but if you, you know, everything costs increase over time with inflation at minimum. There's also issues around staffing and maintaining adequate staffing level. My understanding is, you know, that the city has come to rely on, currently, contractors, which are higher in cost than if it was a city staff person. So we've taken all of that information in and integrated into our analysis. And I, I totally appreciate the fact that it may not be exactly what you were anticipating.
Not just myself, I think the entire government.
Yeah, so again, we felt, and the directive, as I understand it, was to do an independent review and analysis. And, you know, the water, sewer, utility infrastructure, hands down, is the most expensive infrastructure for cities to maintain. It's expensive, right? And if you ignore it, it breaks and people don't get, you know, clean water to drink. You could point to lots of examples nationally, Detroit, lots of places in California where people are having to drink bottled water because their pipelines have corroded and they can't, they can't deliver.
See, we have made every effort possible. I've been here for 10 years.
Right.
We improve the infrastructure.
I, I.
We are working towards that.
Right.
We have been successful with shortening, the Secas mentioned that, we have been successful with Bradner.
And what I. And what I...
Now, the issue of Peterson, that was never part of the plan because Peterson goes back to the wetlands, which councilor Wometo pointed out to me, I'd forgotten the ball, and that's protected by EPA. So there's a portion of that wetland that we cannot touch, no matter what we do, okay? That's protected. But then when it comes, what we do have to focus on is, as you stated, the aging infrastructure. That's consistent with the needs of this community. We have done loopback systems. There's areas in first, second, third, fourth, fifth street. We have areas in the varials which have not been addressed at all. We have invested a lot of money into equipment to be able to update those mainlines. That has not happened. Once the completion of Bradner was done, because that was part of the actual rate increase, Stormy project, that was never part of the rate increase. That came straight from the GRT, I believe, and that in itself has gone ahead and also through the, am I right, GRT?
Yes, sir.
So we're covered with that, okay? That did not affect our cash revenues. What is killing us right now is the infrastructure, the aging infrastructure. We have neglected that. What we requested, and I thought we had made ourselves clear, is a real serious look at the residential rates to decrease those.
Great.
And bringing it to us and saying, we're going to decrease them in 2020, we're going to do that in 2021, 2022, they will implement the actual decrease, that's not what we wanted.
So actually, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here. One of the, this one, so this, here's a summary of residential charges under the four scenarios that we've looked at. And under every single scenario, the residential rate reflects a decrease. And this is at the average consumption of 4,000 gallons. That's the average what your residential unit or housing units tend to use on average. Okay, so every option that we're looking at shows...
Excuse me?
Yes?
Councilor Wometo has a question.
I thought the average was about 2,000.
Not when you look at the residential users overall. And then this, here's, this one's a little bit harder to see because there's so much in here. But at 4,000 gallons, that accounts for about 79% of your residential customers. So there are people that use lower than that. So at 2,000 gallons, that's about 40%, represents about 40% of your bills. At 4,000 gallons, that's almost 80%, right? And then you go to 5,000 and that's almost 90%. So, and what we're proposing, and I can go into more detail or I can just kind of skip ahead like I just did, is that we make some structural changes to your rates, particularly in the tier structure, so that the lower water, lowered usage water users that tend to use 4,000 or less would see a significant decrease in their bill. So what that does is, so the tier, your block structure right now, it says if you use 0 to 2,000 gallons, you pay one rate. Once you go beyond that, you pay a second rate, up until, a higher rate, up until 6,000 gallons. And then from 6,000 gallons to 10,000 gallons and then above 10,000 gallons, right? So I think part of the issue perhaps with the initial rate structure is that 0 to 2,000 gallons only captures 40% of your residential users. And so what we're suggesting is we expand that initial tier to either 3,000, which is where we think the kind of sweet spot is, or up to 4,000. And what you see in each of those scenarios is a decrease in the residential bill per month. So that is one of the options. Now, the water fund, we are, you know, suggesting that we can lower the rates. It's a little bit harder in the sewer fund, and I can go into more detail about that. So, you know, one option is to kind of look at trying to create a net zero impact, but there's some trade-offs with that. And what I was hoping to do tonight was explain some of those trade-offs and then get your impact, you know, your input as to what your preference was. So I recognize that rate study methodologies is fairly complicated, there's a lot of detail to it, and so it might not always come across as, you know, so straightforward. So I appreciate the time to, tonight, to have to come and explain the results of the study. So, you know, I defer to you if you would like me to continue with the explanation of the analysis.
I just, I just had one question. I don't know if this goes towards Maria is, I'm kind of disappointed as to, I think, our impression of what we're going to get versus what we've read here in this report. And of course, and I think just like any director that would, you know, come before us, we would want, you know, all their capital improvements, you know, in any department, you know, to be funded. And I think, you know, in our reality, if we could do that, well, it's, I mean, it's very easy to say, let's do it. But, you know, we got, we out here are here for the constituents that, you know, they're not, you know, they're on fixed incomes and it's hard. So I think my frustration here is that maybe we needed to be more involved in this as to, you know, get more direction as to, okay, what capital improvements and including those, you know, the timeline, I can see that. I know we have the, you know, the, our master plan, everything that we have, but it's, I'm just, you know, just what we were told that we were going to get and what this report came out is completely not what we expected or what I expected for sure.
So, yeah, just again to reiterate, well, first of all, councilmember, there is a, part of the analysis includes, although it wasn't in the executive summary or the presentation, a very detailed list for each fund in terms of the capital improvements that are assumed funded and would welcome any feedback that you might have as to what the council sees as priority projects. And it's not too late to incorporate that feedback. I mean, it's actually, this is, you know, this is our initial results and, but it's not set in stone. We are more than happy to make adjustments based on your input and the community's input. I think the next step was to, you know, engage the public a little bit more via some public meetings to get input on that. You know, this is your community. These are important assets that you have. And you, if you stop, like you just say, okay, we're done raising rates and we're not going to adjust for inflation at a minimum, your, the assets that you have in the ground are going to start to disintegrate even more. And...
I don't believe that that's what we're saying.
Okay.
Okay. What we're saying is that when we requested this report, we wanted emphasis on the residential rate reductions. And they were increased initially. It was for the repair of Bradner and that has happened successfully. We're not saying let's go in there and reduce the rates entirely with regards to commercial rates, but bring down the rates for the residential users that do reside, the majority of them reside on fixed, live on fixed incomes.
Right, and I, I think, madam, that's what...
But did you look at the 20-year plan when you were putting this together?
We looked at the master plan for the funds and the...
And did you look at the 40-year plan?
To the extent that it's incorporated in the master plan, yes.
Okay. Because see, both the 20 and the 40-year plan will give you a very clear, detailed description.
Right.
Of what's occurring. And if you look at it very carefully, you're going to look at the fact or realize the fact that the key components of this are aging infrastructure. That is our focus right now. We've taken care of Bradner. We don't have to move on to Peterson. I have here $10 million that is projected on the Peterson dam. We don't have to. Until we receive a letter, and that's something I really have to answer, from the dam safety that the dam is breached or is in a position where it's going to cause flooding and hurt others within the area, that we don't have to repair Peterson. We have done a minor improvement, and I have that in here, in the 40-year plan, I'm talking to you. Which talks about the fact that we have recovered storage capacity, which is estimated to be 76 to 82 feet per feet. Rehabilitated work was performed on the dam and its abutments in the early 1980s, where all that's aging, but at the same time, there's also been seepage through the dam face, repaired to hear already pump rates. This has been done in 2013. The city constructed a pump station to capture seepage flows below Peterson reservoir and pump the seepage flows into the water treatment plant. From 2013 to 2016, the average seepage was recaptured at the pump station at 177 feet per year. Now, at this point in time, I don't see any need to continue to improve Peterson and also considering the wetland, which was, if I'm correct, at that point in time, years ago, declared by EPA as a protected land. So we can't continue to move forward with the destruction of a wetland which has already been on the books as an EPA finding, willing to protect that wetland. We're going to do what we have to to protect the wetland. So I think story, I mean, story project that came out of our, the GRT, well, we had that money in advance. So we can't say that that rate was actually increased for the sake of story. That's absolutely untrue. While considering that, we went in there, okay, with a $12 million negotiation, which I voted against, or which councilor Wometo's father voted against, because it was thrown at us at the last minute. And we had maintained to serious things, review that, and we were able to negotiate this administration, regardless of how little credit we get, that $12 million to $4 million and a 4,800 feet and the storage capacity that we need if I'm correct, Maria. And we're able to move forward with the needs of the city. Bradner has been completed, it's a binary reservoir, we're very fortunate that we have that. The Aseca has just stated, we have so much water, but yet, if you look at the consumptive use of this community by the people, it's not happening. We have a lot of conservation measures that have been put in place because of the drought situation. So it's going to be really hard for me to rubber stamp something I don't support. I don't support this at all. And that's just me.
So if I could talk a little bit more about the CIP, because clearly this is an important topic for you all. Overall, the CIP that was identified, looking at these various plans, the technical reports, identified $50.4 million in capital project expenses. 50.4 million. And that speaks to a lot of these projects that our mayor's speaking to. Clearly, the city is not able to fund $50.4 million in capital improvements over the next 10 years or 20 years, probably even. So what, as part of this analysis, what we did is we took and we said, okay, of these projects, which are, you know, the various categories are listed, we went through very detail with staff and said, what are the priority projects? Okay? So from that, we took, we went from $50.4 million in capital projects down to 26.5 or whatever was on the prior graph that I had shared. Still, again, that's beyond, that is, that would not result in a rate decrease for your residential customers. Recognize, we recognize that. So from there, we said, okay, the maximum that you could do and still reduce rates for your residential is 40% of that 26. So 12.5 million dollars. The rate analysis assumes 12.5 million dollars in CIP expenditures out of a $50.4 million plan. Okay? So I totally respect and like, again, welcome the feedback and what, you know, what your priority projects are. My recollection about the Peterson dam is that that was identified as a phase three level improvement, not included in the next 10 years, so not part of this rate analysis. But again, happy to go through that in more detail. I'm not prepared to do that tonight, but I could certainly come back and walk through that more.
Is the $12.5 million CIP plan, is that listed in here?
Yeah.
What the expenditures should be?
We can provide you a table of what that, more detail on that. It's not broken out in that level of detail. So I don't, I only have the total on a annual basis, so...
Yeah, I saw the...
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what you had...
We have a whole schedule.
Assume that $12.5 million...
Yeah, I have a very detailed schedule. Maria has it. We'd be happy to share it.
Because if that isn't coordinated with our priorities, then that wouldn't work.
Yeah. So, yes, so it, yes, again, welcome the input on that.
We would need to see that before I give it...
Right. But, I mean, overall, you know, you could schedule, you know, you may disagree with the projects, but I think one of the things to keep in mind is that what we're telling you tonight, what we're sharing, is that what we think you can support and still reduce your residential rates over a 10-year period, or at least reduce your rates in the initial year, but fund over a 10-year period is 12.5 million dollars.
So if a community resident uses 2,000 gallons, what is their current bill going to be?
Okay.
And then with your proposal, what would it be in the next five years?
Yeah. Okay, so, can you read this okay?
Not really. I can see it down here.
You can have some on round page, maybe, first slide 19.
Yeah, I see it.
So currently, residential user that uses 4,000 gallons will pay an estimated bill of $38.58. Actually, the one, can you go up one level? One, here we go. So $38.58. So under Scenario 1A with a 40% CIP execution, that 12.5 million dollars or so, the rate is projected to go down to $36.43 with allowing for that tier one rate category up to 3,000 gallons per month. If you go to 4,000 gallons per month, it would be $34. And under Scenario 2A and 2B, it's even less because that assumes a decrease in the year one. Scenario 1 just assumes that the fixed fee stays flat, basically, and then you see the reduction in the consumption charge. So over, you know, we've looked at the rate overall in terms of both your fixed fee and your consumption-based fee.
So how long of a time period would that reduction be?
So that...
Would it just be for one year?
It would be for one year. So you kind of reset your rates, right, to this new category? And then they would increase by, depending on, you know, your direction, 3% to 4%. So, but inflation is basically, for water and sewer nationally, is about 3%, has been about 3% per year over, you know, the last five years. So it basically, as Lauren mentioned earlier, it largely is related to inflation, cost increases that you incur a year. So, you know, it's a little bit easier if a city, you know, increases and stays current with inflation over time as opposed to letting that just stay stagnant and then coming back and having to do, you know, a major adjustment five years down the road.
Ma'am, let me remind you, I'm sorry, councilor. I have to... We increased the rates ridiculously. I voted against it. We're looking not at 10, 15%, almost 30%. And that's 60% for commercial users. And you're saying we have to adjust this for inflation? This is ridiculous, what they did to the constituency here. Now, I understand we need to increase the rates. We need to maintain a certain amount of revenue, cash revenue that continues to come in. We understand that and we respect that. We need to continue to repair and take care of aging infrastructure. We understand that. The rates for residential customers, the directive was to reduce them. We don't want a proposal of two years from now, 4% decrease, then thereafter, 3%, 3%, 3% increase. That's not what we asked for because we're going to feedback and square one. And all that is happening is that the residency of this community is being adversely impacted. Please listen to me. We have a lot of members here on fixed incomes. We cannot afford it. The majority of our members, our constituency, are retired individuals. The majority of our members, our constituency, are retired individuals. We don't, we have a loss of population from 15 to about 12,900. So our construction industry ratios have dropped since I was elected in 2010. So where are, who's paying for all those increases? A small amount of people, residents who are on fixed incomes. You don't have a lot of expansion and a lot of growth happening here in Las Vegas. Maria should have informed you of this. She knows the history of this community. She knows all of us as city councillors and as an elected governing body. We care about our people. This is not about politics. This is not about anything, but doing what's right for a constituency. Being more responsible leaders for our community. And that's what we expected to get. And I appreciate that you can continue, I'm certain, I'm not going to stop the presentation, but I think that Maria, you didn't get this. The direction that was given, I think, was very clear. And now the direction you're trying is going to be even clearer because we have to take care of our residents.
If I could just make, just a simple, in the way I see all this is, I think out of all the funds, you know, as city councillors, you know, we worry about our, you know, our public safety and our roads and everything that we have, I think the enterprise plan is probably the most healthy.
Exactly.
You know, here, where, you know, and like you mentioned, cheap bid is that, you know, what are ways that we can, you know, to increase, you know, our, you know, the budget of public safety? I think, you know, what about the roads, you know, potholes, paving, everything? I've never thought, well, how can we, I mean, and I know, you know, we have the capital improvements that we have, but I think that we're healthy and based off of the increase that, you know, that was passed, you know, was it popular back then? Probably not, but I think long-term, I think it, you know, we're healthy. And I think Anna Marie could probably vouch for this, and I want to hear from her, what she thinks. But I don't, I don't, I can't penalize our constituents for, you know, yes, it's going to be stagnant for a couple of years, but then that increase in, yes, I understand inflation, but I think we've increased the rates long, you know, for a long term, in my opinion. And that's just what I have to say. I think, again, you know, I don't know if, you know, our.
I can add one thing to keep in mind as you, you know, it's painful. I deal with communities all the time that are faced with this exact same situation. And the smaller the community, the harder it is. Because you have to provide the same level of service as a larger city that has a lot of residents to spread out the cost, right? You don't have that. You have, you're a small community, but it doesn't mean that it's cheaper for you as a city.
We're actually, we're the highest.
Well, but I mean, in terms of providing the service, not, I'm not talking about the rates exactly, but just in terms of providing service, it's expensive. You know, that first time somebody flushes the toilet or turns on the water tap every month, it's expensive. And, and so if you were a larger community and you had more folks that could take on the burden of providing that service, then yes, you could have lower rates. But that unfortunately is not the situation in your community. So I, you know, I, I hear you. I, it doesn't make me happy to come in here and tell you that you need to increase rates. What my job is, and you may, you can, you know, not take my advice, but what my job is as a consultant is to come in here and honestly give you my professional opinion of what it is to maintain your level of service so that you can continue to provide excellent water, sewer and solid waste service to your constituents. And yes, yes, I think as, in terms of funds and management, this is one of the best situations that I have encountered in my, you know, 20-year career of doing this. I think that you do run an excellent financial house with your utility funds. And I'm not trying to suggest in any way that that isn't the case. But what, in our professional review of this, our independent review of this, is that you, there are some issues that have kind of been neglected and ignored. And part of that is, you know, staffing and having adequate staffing. It's hard for the city, as I understand it, to keep qualified people. And so you don't have qualified, you know, operators. You need them for sewer. If you don't have them, you have to hire a contractor. Contractors are more expensive than a city staff person. That, you know, that there are, again, my understanding is with both the water and the sewer lines is that the city has to be reactive instead of proactive in terms of repairs. That there's, you know, the way the valves are situated, for example, doesn't allow the city to easily isolate sections of the pipelines so that they can go in and do targeted repairs. You have to take out a whole city block or, which is expensive. There are situations like that, and I could go on, and I'm sure Maria might want to share more. But we looked at all of that information and we worked, we did hear the direction of, you know, you went through a painful way increase five years ago and trying to make it easier going forward, which is one of the reasons we looked at the structure and actually were able to propose a decrease in water rates, at least initially. So, you know, we went off of the city's 2020 budget in terms of operations and maintenance expenses. We didn't make those numbers up. This is, if you go back a couple of slides to the. The one with the line. This one. So this, you know, the 2020 is based on the current budget. And so obviously, there's a huge portion of cash-funded capital that's somewhat been deferred partly from 2018. But those numbers, you know, in terms of at least the black, the kind of orange and the greenish color, that's sort of your, you know, baseline operations budget with just basically cost of living increases, it's not cost of living, but inflation, CPI-related expenses going forward, right? So yeah, you know, you could just maintain that and ignore the capital projects and keep your rates where they are, probably until about 2024, right? And that's a trade-off you could make. You could say, no, we don't, you know, we don't want to continue to invest in our capital facilities because it's too expensive for our constituents. That's, I mean, people do that. They end up down the line regretting that or the next, you know, folks that need to take on and now raise rates by 15 bucks a month, you know, that becomes super painful. And that's not what I would recommend as a professional, so.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation here today. I'm going to open it up to the council for questions, comments. Councillor Howell, do you have any questions?
Well, I just, I haven't heard the whole presentation, for one thing. I think I really appreciate you working hard on doing this, but I needed to hear the whole presentation. The, I think that we would like to, I mean, I'm not the technical type of person or math or anything like that. What, simple analysis or like a community member having 2,000 gallons a month, okay? What is their cost going to be in, within five years, each year? So they will understand, the community will understand what their rates are going to be when it, within each five years. And, and also, I personally don't want to see our aging infrastructure age anymore. I know that there's been a lot of pipe breakage and a lot of stoppages of businesses because of that. And I think that we need to have a better analysis of our infrastructure and what we need to prioritize on. I know the $40 million plan, Maria, if you can help us with that to let us know what the, what the priorities are going to be. Now, I mean, with, you guys work together, right? So you know what she had mentioned on the priorities, so.
Yes, yes, yes.
But the community wants to know in terms that, okay, I'm, you know, using 2,000 gallons, what is my rate going to be here, one, two, three, four and five? So I can either be prepared for it or enjoy the reduction of it or look at how much I need to save to get those, so I can keep using the 2,000 gallons. That's what they're worried about. They're worried about if we're going to increase the rate, why? And how are we going to reduce the rate? I mean, is the, is the consumer that uses 2,000 gallons a month going to see a rate decrease in five years?
Uh, no.
No.
Basically, the decrease that we're showing is, would only occur in the first year.
First year, right.
And then after, it's either, you know, a 3% to 4% increase.
I read somewhere in here, there's a development fee.
Yes.
Yeah, and that would be the fee that's going to help us fix a lot of our problems, infrastructure.
No, not necessarily. So what the system development fee is, maybe we could go to that, those sets of slides. So this would be a new fee for the city if you wanted to consider it. But it would only be charged to new development. So when somebody comes in and says, I want to build a house or build a business or. And it can only, the fee can only include the class of infrastructure that are going to benefit those new customers. Future development is what I typically call them. So it's a way for growth to pay for growth. And it's allowed under the New Mexican statute. And many communities throughout the United States use this type of connection fee to help make sure that growth pays for growth so that your existing rate payers don't have to pay for that burden, right? But, you know, you're, you have, as Madam Mayor mentioned, you know, you've sort of had declining population in recent history. I think the projection is that it's going to start to increase a little bit per year. And so part of this analysis is establishing, you know, how many, what's your growth projection over the next, say, 10 years? But I don't expect that it's going to, it will give you some additional funds for those specific improvements, but not solve your problems.
A lot of the community members that have spoken to me in regards to, why is my water bill so high? And it turned out, turns out that some of their piping are, have a lot of leaks. So there again is the infrastructure. And if, and if it's the infrastructure that we're responsible for, which is, what, underground? Is that right, Maria?
The infrastructure the city is responsible for would be the main lines, everything up to a customer's meter.
Right.
From the meter to the resident, so it would be just a system.
Right. So there's a lot of issues and reasons why the bills are high.
There are, there are. It's not, it's not cut and dry.
And then when, when, when a community member has gone to another state for a month and comes back and receives a high water bill, they kind of wonder why. And is it because they have leaks within their house? Or is it leaks that are, is because of our infrastructure? And our infrastructure is aging, as everyone has been saying. So we need to make sure that we fix all of our infrastructure. I just think that reality is scary. And we all have to realize that we have to pay to get good ones. They just don't want us to have pipes breaking in five years because we didn't really take a look at your proposal.
Thank you.
I'm a little concerned about, because part of our residency, our fixed income, they all complain, you know, I have a lot of people complain about our wide rates and, and just, it's kind of like, you know, say 40% of our residents are fixed income or 80%, 30%. They're building making it. They're building making, you know, and they, I was, I'm in the, I'm in the streets, I'm talking to people, I'm like, Charlie, what's going on? How come we're so, we're building making, we're building making, and we're going to get our fixed income check every month? And I'm concerned about that, you know, people, if we do get higher rates and that, there will be more people within our town. So I'm a little concerned about that. Thank you for your presentation. Go to Maria and see what else we can get from her.
Councillor Casey? Thank you. I think everybody understands the need for better infrastructure. And, you know, that has been a focus for the last three years that I've been on the council. However, I have a really, I was very shocked when I read this because I didn't anticipate the recommended rates to be so high. And in looking at some statistics about Las Vegas, 36.3% of the people live in poverty. Another 36% live below the poverty line.
70%.
62% of the people that live in Las Vegas are disabled. And that number, I'm sure, is due to a lot of disabled veterans and a lot of our elderly. I cannot support anything that is going to impact poor people in such a huge way. A lot of my constituents live on $600 a month. You know, they can barely make their water bill. They either pay their water bill or they get their medication. Or they, you know, forego eating for a couple of days or a few meals a day, a week to be able to make ends meet. And that is a real concern for me. I just, I can't do it in all good conscience. And I really believe, and I don't know if you ladies were here when we met with the STANTE representative to talk about what we wanted done, but it was my understanding that what we asked for was that the rates not be raised. We have already done three rate increases with the last one done last fiscal year. And it's very difficult for people to barely be able to survive. I know a lot of retirees who, you know, don't run their water. They, you know, take a bath every other day so that they don't use too much water. They wash their clothes just once a week. Some even go longer than that. So everybody is making an effort. And to me, some of the rates are kind of counterintuitive. You know, the tier one rates, you say, raise from 2,000 to 4,000 gallons to encourage more consumption. Well, that's exactly what it said on there, to encourage consumption. And so if you're encouraging consumption, that means, it says, "Consider options of expanding tier thresholds for residential customers to encourage water consumption" on page 13. And so if you're saying that, you're encouraging people to use more water, which is going to cost them more. And so, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, I. I just have a real problem with that. So I think, you know, and yes, we haven't finished the rest of the, of the presentation, but the wastewater recommendations are even more onerous than the water consumption. And I just have real concerns. So I would really like to maybe have you folks go back to the drawing board and give us something that we can really work with, something that we might be able to support with a little bit more enthusiasm than what we have now.
So the, so just one clarification. So what that tier change would allow people to do is to purchase water at a lower rate. So particularly for those customers who already use between 2,000 and 4,000 customers, they actually see a reduction in their bill because they don't pay, that their consumption rate would go down, right? So that is the. So that is the primary objective of looking at that change.
Essentially, what you've done is increased the usage, but left the costs there from the 2,000 to 4,000, okay? But the thing here is that, and you're possibly right, because when I look at the block, it was at 2,000, but anything after the 2,000 would have been penalized for. So if we increase it to the 4,000, but you increase it with a 4%, there's no reduction in 2020 of January. That was what we anticipated. That is what the board, that is what the board wanted. We wanted something to happen in January of 2020, people need relief. That is what was brought to us.
So that does, what I presented tonight actually does show a decrease in the water rate for 2020 overall.
That's not what I saw.
So, yes, it is. It is not the case for sewer.
Yeah, but it's a decrease and then it increases much.
But there is a decrease in 2020. So, you know, we can certainly go back to the drawing board. That is always an option. But what I want to just keep, have you all keep in mind, to go back to the drawing board and to reduce things, you know, further, either the sewer in particular, perhaps the water. That means that you, as a council, have to reduce your budget, right? You're going to have to cut costs. And not just capital costs, but you're going to have to cut operating costs, you have to cut maintenance costs. You're going to have to provide a lower level of service if you want to...
I don't believe that's true because our cash reserves, our cash reserves are very, very healthy at this point in time. We're not moving forward with Peterson because that was not part of the plan. I did look at the actual capital projects 20-year plan. Now, if anybody's moving forward with Peterson, that has to come to the council for approval. And if it didn't come to the council for approval, then I think the board would have a little concern about that. Because if you look at the projected cost for the capital improvement in the 20-year plan, you're looking at $10 million. Where are we going to get the $10 million when we don't need any further water storage? We are fine with our usage. Conservation has kicked in, we're doing great, as I've mentioned already. So it's going to be difficult for anyone to justify to this board, especially me, that Peterson Dam has to be repaired at this point in time, considering the options.
Right, ma'am, I understand.
And I hope, Maria, you have not made any improvements to Peterson.
Madam Mayor, the council has already approved moving forward with the planning and design for Peterson.
Planning and design for Peterson, okay?
And the funding for construction, and hopefully a good portion of planning and designing construction, we're going to go to the legislature and ask for it.
Okay, so let me ask you a few questions on that, Maria. Being that we moved forward with the planning and design, which obviously was the wrong direction, what we need to focus on is our infrastructure. And that has been raised over and over. When you have lines that are consistently breaking in First Street, Second Street, up to Fifth Street, then you have all the laterals, which the lines, we have nothing but problems with. We have fixed some of the loopback systems, but even with that, we still have a lot of major issues. With regards to Peterson, if we did that, I apologize to the council for even putting it on the agenda, but I think we have to look at the actual tiers and see where we're at with regards to the decrease of residential rates at this point in time. I believe, Maria, very clearly that this council made that directive to you. And I don't think for one second that any one of us deviated from that directive. So that was the expectation by the entire board, that you come to us with solid residential rate reductions. We're looking at commercial at this point in time. Hopefully, the board in the future, whoever it is, can revisit those rates at that point in time. Right now, we're looking at relief in the actual residential rates. Now, I've looked at the 40-year plan, I've highlighted different things off that. I've also looked, like I say, at the 20-year plan, and I'm looking at Peterson here, and it says here that it's going to take us approximately $10 million off the per, to be able to fix that. But yeah, see, that's where I'm having conflicting issues with Peterson.
Yeah, because of the rate study, that, because that was already planned on being...
Yes, we know that. But, see, Maria, you're the utility director.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, if you have, we just repaired Braden. We just finalized, not too long ago, what, two years ago, story project. We're secure. According to all the geosigns, engineering reports that we got, 30 years, we're secure. So where did we miss the boat on requesting the residential rates? Now, the more I look at this, it, what are you going to do with the 30 million reserve?
30 million reserve?
The rate study assumes a 12-month reserve. You actually draw it down in the early years, and then you start to build it back up so that by the end of the 10-year period, you have the equivalent of a 12-month operating reserve, operating, I don't know what that means.
What we need to focus on is the aging infrastructure. We're on target. We have the reserve in there to focus on that, not Peterson. What we need to focus on, okay, is taking care of the residents. Braden, for example, we had set that aside, $11 million that we don't have to pay back. That is not going to impact our budget. Peterson, Sterling, that came out of the Water GRT, which does not, again, impact the actual revenue. Then we have another issue that we have to focus on, which was raised, was not only the aging infrastructure, but the issue of fire protection, because the mains are small. So we have to repair those mains. This is what our focus should be on, not Peterson. We know this.
Madam Mayor, the state engineer is definitely encouraging and making sure that we move forward with Peterson. It is deteriorating more every day. We had a legislative representative there, and a piece of Peterson came down and fell right next to him. So that reservoir is deteriorating and falling apart, and we do need to address that.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Have we received anything from the, hold on, let's see if I find that note here. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. In order for us to help our community members that are not able to afford a lot of the rates, I think we need to aggressively look for outside sources for funding. And it's very important that we look for economic development. It's very important that we look for businesses that are going to be coming in here, that's going to be able to increase our grocery receipts tax. All those things, all the revenues that we need to look at, we need to aggressively go after. And it's not going to be just through the legislatures. We have to put our heads together and find it and look to see where we can get more funding. Because I hate to be here 15 years from now, and all the aged homes that our community members are living in are going to be falling apart. We can't afford that. We can't afford to have pipes that are going underground, breaking apart, and we can't afford to have our community members that can't afford to fix their homes, their piping. So we need to come up with ideas on economic development and also get some grant monies to help our community members fix their pipes at their homes. And so they won't have leaks at their homes. And so they won't have to pay the exuberant amount of water, you know, bills, mainly because they have leaks. So we go out for grants to help our community members to fix their homes. I know PNM can help us. There's a lot of companies out there that can help us. We just need to put our heads together and really look and find. And we haven't done that. We haven't done that as a group, as a whole governing body and the whole administration. We need to do that. Because these, we need to keep our infrastructure updated every year. We can't afford to not do anything with our infrastructure because we can't raise rates. We have to really take a look at that, our future. Yeah, and our infrastructure is still failing.
Because we were focusing on this other project, but yet it did not impact the reserves council. So we fell asleep all this time on the infrastructure. The money's been there.
Well, we need to, we need to have conversations as a, with the administration and our governing body, which we have not done.
Well, do we? Okay. I have a question, for Maria. Has there been a threat to the Peterson Dam breaking? Has there been a threat?
There is a threat to it deteriorate. The way it's designed, it just continues to deteriorate. We do have water coming...
Everything deteriorates, Maria.
Yes, but we do have water actually physically coming through the dam face itself.
Yes, we know that.
Yes, and it's becoming bigger and bigger every...
And I've told you here what has occurred, where we have been saving water and how we've been addressing that issue, okay? Now, secondly, do you have information, is there, if there's a threat? Essentially not, other than it's deteriorating, but it's been deteriorating forever. Now, more importantly, have you received a letter from the dam safety bureau?
We do receive an inspection every year where they do have...
Have you received a letter from the dam safety bureau that we need to repair the infrastructure in its entirety, because that's what you're proposing with the $10 million, that it's ready to breach? Have you received that information? Do you have a letter in your possession to that effect?
No.
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions?
We can call the dam safety bureau and ask them.
No, actually, we're going to give...
They've been part of our meetings. We just had a kickoff meeting, they've been part of our meetings, they're aware of how it's deteriorating and how it needs to be replaced.
I think we need to have that legislator come here and talk to us and tell us how he felt when their piece of dam fell on it.
And that was, the funny thing was, he was on the finance committee, and he asked to be stated, "Go, let me know when you need the money."
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so $10 million, it's not going to impact our cash reserve?
That's supposed, Madam Mayor, I was never going to request that, the construction part, and even, hopefully, the construction and a good portion of the planning and design will come from funding sources, whether it's capital lay or another funding source.
Okay, so essentially, we don't have to raise the rates?
I don't think that was included in the, it's not included in the rates. The $10 million that you're questioning is not even a part of this evaluation.
Okay, Councilor, Maria, let's, Councilor Miller?
I just, I'm still, I understand, I still grasp as to the need. I get that. It just, and I wish I would have thought about looking at the previous report as to, you know, the inflation that happened back then in those, you know, in those increases, and then basically try to, try to evaluate them based off of the, you know, the cost of inflation and where we're at today versus, you know, back then, because, I mean, it was only five years ago. And I understand, you know, where you're starting from, we're starting at where our fees are today, and, you know, the proposed need, I get all that part, it just, I think the increases that happened back then, this is my opinion again, is they were sufficient enough, and we could still sustain all the repairs and everything that we need, in my opinion. Of course, to me, I think, you know, there's other needs in our community. Right now, I don't think that we could afford to put the burden on our residents. I think it's also our job as city councils and the mayor to seek alternative sources and not just put the burden on the residents. And that's, that's the issue that I have with this. I would like to hear, you know, the breakdown as to, you know, what these, what these projects were, and I agree with Councilor Howell, is to, we don't want in a few years for, you know, catastrophic, you know, water breaks or anything like that, but I don't see that happening, but I'm willing to listen to that. And I don't know if we could have a special meeting and hear those specific needs as to, because they're not as, you know, and it's unfortunate that we haven't gone through that. Yes, we've talked about the master plan, the ICIP plan, but I don't know, I mean, based off of this report, you know, it's like, wow, you know, we need all this. It's more drastic than what my impression of, I mean, yes, I know, you know, we have infrastructure problems within our community, I understand that part, but we also have a lot of other needs, and we can't just focus on, put a burden on this, and at the same time, we're trying to improve public safety, improve roads, and, you know, you know where I'm getting at? It's a balance, and that's where I think we need to come to this, is it's a balance. I'm willing to hear that out, and Madam Mayor, that would be my suggestion, if we could do that, you know, soon.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think we have to give a clear directive, vote, Maria, make herself, something from this point in time.
Madam Mayor, I have a question?
Yes.
Well, actually, more of a clarification, if I might. I don't know if anybody did have time to go through all the presentation, but I think one of the most critical parts that we're not addressing right now is actually the wastewater division. And I think when it comes to water, one of the, when we were talking about the rate decrease and finding a way to reduce rates, that we did discuss that, that that was part of the directive, was to make sure that infrastructure was covered, but try and reduce rates at the same time. They found that wastewater, which I think we all kind of knew beforehand, was greatly underfunded. And so looking at that maybe as the base and saying, okay, how can we restore our infrastructure and our funding for wastewater, and then finding that balance with water, where my division, my department, will work with the money we have. So if the council comes back and says, "We're going to make a $10, $5, $10, 2%, 12% change, reduction," my staff will work with that, whatever we have to work with. Knowing that wastewater is actually not in a good place, my request would be, we consider starting with that as a base and how to restore that, and then making an equivalent reduction on the water side, so that either there is no impact to customers or a reduction related to that, to customers. I agree that our customers cannot afford more. We would love for them to be able to pay less. At the same point, we do need to look at the infrastructure that is deteriorating and that we are having issues with. And one of the issues with wastewater, Mayor, I believe you're aware, there was a huge loan that was taken out years ago, and wastewater spends 50%, I believe it's about 50% of its revenues just on debt service, and which leaves very little to operate and maintain the facility. So water, for instance, is operating on $4 million a year, and wastewater is operating on $1 million a year. And there is a discrepancy there. And I think if we can look at wastewater and restore some of the security there, and then make an equivalent reduction on the water side, we will learn to work with it, and we will prioritize our water line repairs and priorities of projects, maybe stretch out Peterson longer than, hopefully, having it done in three to four years. And we'll find a way to make the most important projects happen first. To give the council kind of an estimate, we're currently working on a $400 million grant from, to address a water line repair on North Gonzalez. $400,000 for nearly a half a million dollars for a couple of blocks on North Grant. I have, based on our leak detection, four to six of those projects. So we're looking at $3 million just in our currently known leak repairs that need to be made. And I'm not talking about small leak repairs, I'm talking about replacing large sections of water lines. And these all come from our technical reports, our leak detection reports, our ICIP, our PER, and any other master plan type documents that we have.
Okay, thank you, Maria. What I'm going to also, go ahead, go ahead.
Just, and I think that's where the importance, what you just mentioned, is those reports, you know, and I think that's where we're lacking, is that we don't see those reports, or we don't see those, yes, you mention them once in a while, but I think it's important that we see those reports for us to understand, you know, what's happening.
Councilor, I would love to give a presentation and be able to show all of the documents that we have and all of the projects we got, and how we prioritize them, why we prioritize them, and the way we are.
And if I just may add to Maria's statement about the wastewater, my understanding is that, while the water has been fairly successful over the recent years in receiving funding from the state to pay for infrastructure projects, there isn't much, if any, funding available for the wastewater fund or wastewater projects. And so, you know, remember Casey mentioned, you know, significant increases that we were showing with wastewater in the early years, and that's partly because there are no offsetting resources of funding that is clearly available for wastewater to shift some of that cost
Maria, I'd like to, and I believe the council will concur with this recommendation, is that you, we, I would like, and I believe the council would like to, for you to come back to us in three days, let's say by Monday, with a new plan, you and your team, and determine how we're going to reduce the residential rates. I, you need to really look at your department, Maria. You need to look at your... need to really look at your department, Maria, you need to look at your administrative burdens and any other increases or burdens that are being, that we're, we're having to include into this plan. A successful director manages administrative burdens to the minimum, so it's your duty to make certain that we have very little burdens in your department. If you have to reorganize, you sit down with MRE and you fix the problem, but you have to do what's in the best interest of our constituency. You have a big budget, you have good staff, and you have a lot of staff, you have very qualified, competent staff, use them, Maria, you can't leave our consultants the rest of our lives, just can't do it. So I think at this point in time, and if I'm incorrect, or you want to add anything, please state what you have to. Um, I'd like to see a three-day plan, in this case, Monday, to decrease the residential water rates, um, the residents that come through for the city when we needed them, and it's been tough for each and every one of them. A rate increase for Story Lake and Bradler, we took care of Story Lake, we took care of Bradler, but none of the funds of those rate increases was used for either project. Huge impact to consumer, we all have pride in our landscaping and quality of life. Provide different similarities to this board that is going to decrease the residential rates and that is going to cause minimal impacts to the city infrastructure, because that is the goal. Now, if there's anybody or anything left out, please add to that, uh, recommendation. Councilor Casey, you have anything to add?
No, I think that's-
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Howell?
I don't think three days is enough.
Well, no, it's going to be actually five or six days.
On Monday.
Okay, well, that's okay, if she needs more time, she'll let us know. Do you need more time?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll discuss with my consultants and see, because we're not the only city they're working with, that's why they already have-
And they can email you, would that be okay?
Let me, let me work with them afterwards, we'll-
They just need to-
I also have an idea that might be considered. So, um, our modeling system that we use, um, one idea is that we could come back and do another presentation where we actually walk you through kind of our, um, high-level analysis, so you can see, okay, if we cut, um, operations by so much, if we cut our CIP by so much, if we draw down our reserve by, you know, X millions of dollars over the next five years, you know, we can show you in real time the, the impacts on that revenue requirement, so that you know the trade-offs, um, and that, you know, it can be a really instructive tool, uh, to allow you to make an informed decision, you know, where, where you want those trade-offs to be. Our, our financial plan is pretty flexible, we have a lot of ability to, you know, dial in what the desired results are, but it, they're trade-offs as a result, and so that's another option, as opposed to us just, you know, printing out a paper, um, summary of, you know, you know, there, there's-
So that allows for interaction?
Yes, it allows for-
If the council asks a question, you can make the change and we can see the results.
It's another idea.
You should make that a special, you know, look into that.
Could you also include the detailed, uh, list of the capital improvements when we get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we understand, it's, it's Thanksgiving week.
Yes, we understand, so, um, how many days do we have?
Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I'll come back to the city manager and let her know when we'll be ready for that.
Okay.
I'll assume you can be ready for that.
Councilor? You ready?
Madam Mayor, if we're going to do that, I would propose that we have a special meeting that is open to the public.
Exactly, we can use that as a public hearing meeting as well, to start moving towards rate reductions of residents, good idea.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
To address, uh, one of, uh, Councilor Casey's statements about the, the stretching the, the tier to 4,000, where the language said, uh, "We want, you know, to use more water," that was one of the things that actually customers came back to me and said that they had stopped using water for irrigation for their plants, and they wanted to use more water, but because of the rate structure stopping at 2,000, it was hindering them. And so, that response to stretch it to 3,000 or 4,000 was actually based on customers coming to us with that. So, I know the language makes it look like, "I want you to use more water," and I would like for people to use more water for the purposes of keeping vegetation alive, keeping our community green, uh, not for, to, to erasing in money, but because we do need to use more water for the health and safety of our community, and by stretching that-
And that also increases the revenues in the utility department, where we use more water. We're not at a higher rate, and we can't afford it, Maria.
Absolutely, Mayor.
And we know this, we've discussed this a million times.
Absolutely, and that's why the, the one scenario that we were looking at was the initial lowering by 4%, and the tiered increases afterwards can always be adjusted, um, and so we will come back with something that has a-
Thank you.
May I ask if there is a target percentage reduction? Uh, I know that we did a-
Well, initially, initially, when, when they increased the rates, I'll give you my target number.
Yes, ma'am.
And they had different rates for Meadow, I believe it was. We're looking at 27 to 30% rate increase, and that was for the residential users within the city. I felt that the tiers that were presented to us at that time, 15% would have been sufficient. We look at a 15%, that means that you'd have to reduce what was already there on the residential rate, and I'm just talking mostly to water usage, not so much what you've stated that you need a little help on to, to increase your revenue, I understand that, you can keep that at that, you know what I mean? I think it was a, what is it, sewer?
The, the sewer, yes, yes.
So if you've got that, but also, Maria, you need to understand, I know you do, you're a very smart woman, okay, that the sewer and the water go hand in hand. So if you increase one, that goes up, if you decrease one, that goes down. So you have to be more creative as to how you're going to make that work without impacting the residents, because it's not going to do us any good for you to increase the water usage from the 2 to 4,000 without penalty at a reduced rate, and I'm not saying drastically reduced rate, because we need to continue to look at the aging infrastructure of this community, but you can also work with that to offset the sewer, the sewer rate, and work hand in hand with that. Now, if we have a 27 to 30% increase, I think at that time, Riddo presented that, the 15% would have been sufficient, it's obvious that I was right on target. So now, look at a 15% rate reduction.
Absolutely, ma'am, we'll take a look at that, including maybe CBI and some other things, but we'll take a look at that and then balance it with the wastewater.
Sounds good.
And, uh, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you very much. What the consultants wanted and what I wanted was actual feedback from the council on something like this, and I appreciate this.
I just want to make sure we're clear, Maria, do you understand where we're going with this?
Absolutely.
Gotcha, good. Councilor Casey, good recommendation, good. Thank you, thank you ladies very much. We're running out of time, we need to move forward, we appreciate you being here today. Please don't take us, um, asking, um, tough questions as being negative, or that we don't want to see any form of, uh, result, the result that we want is just in, in our direction today. So I think that, uh, we're, we're still moving in the right direction, we're still moving forward, so thank you for your presentation here today.
That's a good clarifying question to follow up on the last question about the decreases. When you're talking about, say, a 15% adjustment, are you, um, suggesting that that happened initially and then additionally?
I don't think that we could do it in an initial reduction.
Okay.
It would be too much, but if you went ahead and introduced it and reduced it within a three-year period, you're looking at 5% reduction for three years, and I think that the impact of that would not be so harsh. Moreover, I think it's critical to see that after the first year, that our utility director bring it to the governing body and see where we're at. If in one year, we see that the impacts are too harsh to this community, and we cannot reap the infrastructure improvements, then let the council know, and we can readjust that rate at that point in time, I think that's correct? And within three years, if we see it's, it's too much, then we can either freeze it after the first year at the 5%, or we can say, okay, maybe 2% the following year, maybe 2% the following year. But there will be a point in time when we have to stop the reduction, we understand that, but that's something that we can look at, and maybe 15% is too high, it could be 13. If you might, and if you subtract the 27% minus the 15%, that's about what, 27, what is it, 13%? So you could do it 4%, 4%, 4%. But we, I think that it has to be looked at every single year. If only, to hit it with a 15% immediately, it's too much. Although, when we hit it with a 27%, if we see one year, that was drastic, what an impact, so look at that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bring it back to, bring it, bring it coming back.
I'll just make a step, and I'll, and I'll get with the city council.
Wait, and email the council, and, and the rest of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Did you want to continue, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I think so.
Make a commercial return.
Are you sure, are you sure you want to continue?
I'm gonna call in sick tomorrow.
The next item on the agenda is the finance reports, and we have Ms. Tana Vega.
Well, Tana, hopefully, they will ask you a question.
That's fine, I'm prepared.
You're tired.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. I don't-
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Finance Department, we'd like to present the revenue and expenditure reports for the general fund, enterprise funds, and the recreation fund for the month of October, which represents, um, and I round it up, it's 34% versus the 33.3366. Total revenues collected by the general fund, $3,755,044. Total actual expenditures, $3,337,600. Enterprise fund, revenues reflected on the accrual basis, wastewater, $928,239. Natural gas, $748,487. Solid waste, $1,183,840. Water, $1,798,684. Expenditures for wastewater on the actual basis, $1,043 and $147. Natural gas, $957,857. Solid waste, $1,028,863. And water at $1,555,567. The recreation center, total revenues, including a transfer coming in from the general fund, And actual expenditures, $194,331.
Questions, Paula? Thank you.
I don't have any questions on the actual finance report, but I do have questions on the check report that you sent us, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate some help here.
Sure.
On page 21, the fifth vendor on the list is the Open Sky Monument Arts for Tai Chi Kuan classes, or evidence-based, something like that. Are those the Tai Chi classes at the rec center?
At the seniors.
At the senior center?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience. I'm glad you did not abandon ship on those, I taught you.
We're glad to be here. Um, we have John Arnold, he is part of, it's his business, and he's contracted with us, uh, through, um, the senior program to provide Tai Chi services.
Okay, and does that money come from state agency and AG?
Yes, it does. Evidence-based, they give us a portion of-
Yeah, so that, that's the contract, is that, uh, we, we get reimbursed $10 per unit for the services that he provides for Tai Chi, um, we pay him a portion of that.
And this year, the agency on AG budget went up, so we should be looking good.
I hope so, we did get a, a pretty drastic cut.
I know, last year, so this year, it was supposed to be readjusted with the new year.
Yeah, I'm hoping with the federal money coming-
She understands the needs, very, very.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is on page 22, the sixth vendor, Richard Lieberman, MD, professional services, $1,000 medical director contract.
Oh, that's a light item, associated with that.
206.
206, oh, that would be for the fire department, because they have to have a medical doctor-
On board.
On board.
Okay, so he's on contract, and he gets paid $1,000 a month?
No.
No?
That would be, uh-
Who's Billy?
He had to go, uh, to fire.
He's on a fire call.
That would be, um, I think it's semi-annual.
It's not a-
Versus-
So is it like on-call if something happens, and, yes, ma'am, okay. Okay, and the other one is on page 25, and that one says Hospital Services Corporation, payroll transfers, third quarter.
Okay, that, that is a processing fee that we pay hospital services for our state unemployment taxes, and the services, hospital services provides, uh, when a person files for, uh, unemployment benefits, they, they handle all of the transactions and whatever, and if they have disputes. So they, they, they're a go between, for, um, between the employee and, well, they're going, they, they are representing the city when an employee has an issue with the state unemployment.
I wonder what hospital services we were providing.
At the city.
It has nothing to do with medical.
No, it has nothing to do with medical.
It's unemployment.
They just call them, they handle a lot, a lot of other types of issues, and, and the name of the company just happens to be Hospital Services.
They need to change their name to something more generic.
I questioned it when I first saw-
Yeah.
The vendor.
And then on page 30, Hope of Law Office, professional services attorney for September, Julia Holcomb?
Yes, we have her working on-
Assisting.
Two cases, I believe, it's two cases?
Uh, there's a case, I believe, 2015 or 2016, I, I believe I mentioned it to council that went up to the Court of Appeals, Supreme Court, backed down as the Court of Appeals, and now, uh, it's been remanded down to the local labor relations court.
And she has been handling that, that case for, well, over-
Many years.
Five or six years.
And, uh, page 33, we have Susan Cave, professional services, pre-employment and other, is what it says. Is it, she a psychologist?
She would be for police department.
PD.
Okay.
Would you explain?
Yes, ma'am, um, the law enforcement academy-
No, I understand, because I used to, I used to help train the police in Laswell. Okay, page 35, City of Las Vegas Water Projects, it says AP Transfer, GRT, October, $26,939.2.
That would be the GRT that comes in and is directly deposited into the general fund bank statement, and, uh, but it belongs to the, uh, to 646, uh, and that's in the enterprise bank statement, so it's just a bank-to-bank transfer of monies that came in from tax and rev over to enterprise.
Okay, and the last one is on page 48, a check to Jeffrey J. Viegas, and it says regular, I don't know what that means, for $14,460.
Is that maintenance for tires, or?
Yes, yes.
For tires?
That would be for tires.
And do we have, we have a contract with them, or?
Uh, it's by quotes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. No, okay. Councilor Miller, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Tana.
Okay. Well, because, can I ask questions? Well, because can I ask questions on the fixed asset inventory, or is that a separate?
That's separate.
A separate agenda, okay.
But I would like to present the information I had on the lodgers tax.
Oh, yes, please, ma'am, thank you.
And based on some public input we had at the work session, I did go back and do a seven-year analysis of the GRT that was collected, of the lodgers tax that was collected, in addition to, including the, the gross sales that applied to the, the tax collected. In the summary report I have, I did give the council additional information, and that's that the beginning cash balance we had at July one was two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. Budgeted revenues, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and budgeted expenditures and transfers of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three, with an anticipated ending cash balance of twenty-seven thousand, one forty-three. The revenues are allocated, payroll at forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven, transfers at forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six, operating expenses forty-three thousand, one hundred, leaving a balance for advertising and contracts of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars. The lodgers tax advisory board has already committed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, thirty-one dollars. And part of that budget that is left over, which is a hundred and seventy thousand, is committed to infrastructure of seventy-five thousand, four hundred, leaving uncommitted funding of budget, rather, of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seven, versus the two hundred and eighteen thousand that was.
Reported.
Reported.
Okay. Can you give this information to Mr. Schlitz?
I, I certainly will tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Schlitz?
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, are the consent agenda items. Can you read the mentions of it? I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Casey.
I move that we have the, that we adopt the consent agenda items one, two, and three, and request that the city court read them into the record counter.
Please.
Consent item one, approval of out-of-state travel to Cannon City, Colorado. Item two, approval of out-of-state travel to Quantico, Virginia. Item three, approval to reject bid twenty-twenty dash zero-three to Rocky Road Construction due to bid being over budget.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion to add.
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Yulubri Junior?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Amaro?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey and a second by Counselor Amaro. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much, it's continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next, we're going into business items. The first item is the approval, disapproval to adopt resolution nineteen dash fifty-five for administrative and financial support, including a forty-eight thousand cash match for the FY two thousand nineteen, New Mexico Main Street, capital outlay, public infrastructure funding for the Great Blocks on Main Street, Railroad Avenue, Phase Two grant application. And we have Mr. Robert Archuleta and Michael from Main Street. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Good to see you again.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are here today to present to you resolution nineteen fifty-five, which is an administrative and financial support for a forty-eight thousand dollar match for a grant that was put together mainly by Michael, and, and I assisted with it, for a four hundred thousand dollar capital outlay grant request to New Mexico Main Street for the Great Blocks project. So before I go, we go any further, let me just give a little quick history. So New Mexico Main Street issued a call for projects about two months ago. Subsequently, Michael and I were, were required to participate in a webinar, sort of discussing the, the grant and the process. A grant was submitted, it was a couple weeks.
September twenty-first.
Yeah, to New Mexico Main Street for the amount of four hundred thousand. So we are required to prepare a twenty percent match from the four hundred thousand, and then, which is eighty thousand. So of that eighty thousand, we are required to come up with a sixty percent cash match, which comes out to forty-eight thousand. The, the match will go down significantly as we are, we are continuing to seek other entities that will assist us with that match requirement. For example, we want to potentially tap into the lodgers tax infrastructure one percent. Michael has secured five thousand dollars from South East Capital. So we are looking at fourteen other different entities that can potentially help with that forty-eight thousand, and then that amount will start to drop, and it will be a less burden on the city. So the project is planned and designed, we, that was paid through, through a grant through Main Street, so that wasn't a burden on the city. So together with the one hundred and fifty thousand that we already have, a potential award of four hundred thousand plus the one fifty, and then the matches that the city is providing, we will have approximately six hundred and eleven thousand for the railroad district, for the Great Blocks project. So at this time, I will turn it over to the council, Madam Mayor, for any questions.
I have a question. I have a question. What is the status of phase one? This is phase two?
So, so we got the, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars almost a year ago. It was awarded in November, and the contracts were all signed in January. So that was phase one, and we worked on the contracts to get everything together for that, and then we found out that the, that New Mexico Main Street had gotten more money, more capital outlay money, and we started talking about the idea with the engineer that did the plans about doing phase one and doing a phase two together, so there's one construction site. So when, we went ahead and applied for this money, and just put the one fifty on hold so that it'll be kind of just one phase, really. It'll be phase one and two together.
There's no, we, we don't jeopardize the funding on phase one?
No, no, it's actually with their encouragement, and they encouraged us, the grant came up really quick. They went from having only five hundred thousand dollars to give the whole state, going back up, now they're at four million, and they're going to probably go to ten million next year.
Madam Mayor, absolutely not, this does not impact phase one.
Right.
If anything, we can issue an RFP using phase one and phase two dollars if we're awarded together, and that actually saves us.
As long as we don't.
More time and one engineer.
Because then if we try to do that, that's illegal. We have to go ahead and advertise it accordingly.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I want to thank you, Michael, for all the work and contribution that you did to the program, of course, as well as Robert, I appreciate that. So I have, I'm going to open it up to council, questions?
No, go ahead.
I just, I just had one question, as far as the match. If Main Street doesn't come up with the match, would the city be, I mean, we don't want to lose the opportunity at this.
No, we don't, we, we don't, counselor, we, we've talked, we've talked quite a bit about it, where they're going to go out to other agencies, and no, we don't want them to. We can base part of it in this year, and then, of course, next year as well. And so it wouldn't be a, a huge impact to anyone other than having it done, break it down by fiscal year, but that's.
And encumber the funds here.
We can encumber, and then we can encumber part of it for this year, and then, of course, part of it for next year. If need be.
So that discussion has been made in case.
Yes, we've talked a lot about it, haven't we?
Yeah, we've talked about it. We, we, we are also going to do a presentation at Fundit, New Mexico Fundit, where we'll go and present the project, and then they, these are lots of agencies that can help us, New Mexico Economic Development, a bunch of agencies, we go and present to all of them, and then some of them could step forward with funding for the project. And then we're applying for grants, too, so.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are one of the top one or two projects in the state that they're looking at, that have Main Streets, so they're, they have their eye on us, so we are a priority to New Mexico Main Street, so I just wanted to point that out. And we will have an opportunity to apply for more money in June, which will significantly increase even more dollars coming in.
We're already required to fund it, we just have to be, just look at the match.
Yes.
It sounds good, thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Casey, any questions?
No questions.
Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you briefly explain the Great Blocks project?
So the, the Great Blocks project is a, is a designation, Great Blocks is a designation by New Mexico Main Street, and it designates a major rejuvenation project in, in a downtown district. We have three districts, so we oversee Ridge Street, and the Plaza, we oversee Douglas, and then the railroad district. So we decided in twenty sixteen, Cindy and, and our board wrote a plan, and got major funding, seventy thousand dollars of funding for New Mexico Main Street to create the plan, to start to renovate and rejuvenate the railroad district, where there are eighty-seven buildings, and there needs, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So, so it just doesn't, so it's a two-point-one million dollar project, and so this is about six hundred thousand dollars of that two-point-one million. And what, what they're saying to us now is that their money is going up, and they want real priority for the state, or one of two towns that are priority.
Madam Mayor, Counselor Howell, essentially, it's a streetscape project that has a lot of improvement, sidewalk, stand concrete, lamppost, benches, lighting, gardens.
Trees.
Traffic calming measures, trees. So really, essentially beautifies East Lincoln and parts of railroad.
This was part of the original plan years ago, correct? This is just a phase-in project, good.
Just, I haven't seen it up to, in the forefront for a long time, so that's why.
Do you want to say?
I was, I, I've seen it before, but it just hasn't been come up to the forefront.
I would be glad to provide that for you as well. We're a little bit, we're excited, especially if there's additional funding available.
Yes, that's good. Congratulations.
Counselor, you ready?
Okay.
Okay, it's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution nineteen dash fifty-five for the administrative and financial support, including the forty-eight thousand dollars cash match for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Do you have a second? Second, we'll call.
Counselor Yulubri Junior?
Yes.
Counselor Amaro?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Howell, and a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
The next item on the, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, was approval, disapproval to review and certify fixed asset inventory with the, for finance for our final two thousand nineteen audit?
Audit.
Yes.
Yes, as required by the state auditor's accounting audit rule, certification of our fixed assets and inventories are, is required. And finance is here today, this evening, to request a certification of the fixed assets in the inventories.
Questions, Congress? Counselor Casey?
Thank you, just a, a question and a comment. I guess I'm, I'm concerned because we still have a lot of the same items that we have on the fixed asset inventory last year, and, you know, we go back to like nineteen eighty-three, and I don't know where you're picking all this stuff, but I don't even want to know. I wish somebody would steal it or something. I was like, geez.
Give it away? No, actually, I did submit a memo to all departments along with the assets associated with their departments, and I asked them to cross out any assets they did not have any longer in their possession, and if they knew if the items had gone to auction already in prior years, or they were just disposed of, you know, let's say a printer, because some of the assets on here, currently, I'm only capitalizing anything that's a thousand dollars or over. But some of the assets here were less than that. And a printer, if it was purchased for two fifty, well, it just went in the garbage can, because you can't really recycle it. So unfortunately, I did run out of time, and, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to get all the lists, all the items that they provided to me, the departments, and prepare a listing for mayor and council for your approval to dispose of them. I mean, they're no longer of existence. You know, we don't know if they, they were sold many years ago, or where they're at.
I ask because I think at the, like, the very last page, or pretty close to the very last page, it shows what was actually disposed of, and I think there were eleven items, or I don't know. Oh my gosh, eleven out of twenty, because of, and so it's like, you know, I thought that we had talked about this last year when we did this, to have an auction, and it was suggested that we would have an online auction months ago, and it didn't happen, so I'm wondering what happened to that.
We have, what we had, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, members of the council, what we had done is we had requested a listing of all of the assets that, from each department, to, to start preparing the list, because we need to, through the resolution to you, and then, of course, go to the state auditor's office, and so I think that's where we're at, you know.
Right, because the list I asked from the departments are assets they don't even have anymore in their departments. So if, I, I know the senior center has changed out some ranges and other items, and they need to get disposed of, so any department that is still physically has these items has to prepare a listing for us in order to bring it to mayor and council for approval, to put it for auction, or if it's totally obsolete, you know, decide how we're going to dispose of it.
I, it would be wonderful if we could get it done so that when we have to do this next year, we have.
A clean, you know.
Yeah, a smaller.
A smaller.
Smaller. The booklets are starting to build a whole new room at my house, and so I really would like to see that happen as soon as possible.
I certainly will start working on that.
And it would ease your burden, too, of.
Oh, yes.
To deal with all of that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, it's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of, and certification of the fixed asset inventory.
Do you have a second? We'll call.
Counselor Amaro?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Yulubri Junior?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey, and a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vega, you can continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next, the third item on the agenda is approval, disapproval, and resolution number nineteen dash fifty-seven, on a budget adjustment.
The senior, I'm, I'm, I am requesting an increase of twelve, twelve thousand, five hundred for the senior center for legislative appropriation, they give us twelve thousand, five hundred for two H-back units at the senior center.
Questions, Congress? It is a pleasure of the board.
Madam Mayor, well, she hasn't finished going over the rest, but.
Sorry, tell me. I'm tired. Time is up in days of a busy review.
Increase fund, the P D O R S fund by expenditures by four hundred and four dollars, and that is coming from, going to be taken care of by unbudgeted cash balance. The Main Street received the funding that was, we spoke of, that was spoken of earlier, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, and we're requesting expenditures of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, with the matching of twenty-two thousand coming from the general fund as a transfer. And then I've listed the transfer coming, coming out of general fund, out of unbudgeted cash balance, and the library received estate in grants, state in aid, state grants in name of one thousand, four hundred and three dollars for, for books in educational materials.
Questions, Congress? It is a pleasure of the board.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of resolution nineteen fifty-seven to transfer the items that were listed by. by finance.
Welcome.
Counselor Yulubri Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey and a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Next item is council reports, Madam Mayor.
Council, you ready?
Yes. Stop signs around the three limits are, there's someone, I go through some of the streets, and they're pretty faded. I don't know if you have any replacements for them?
Yes, we do. And if we don't, we're submitted, are we getting, we are.
I know that, I know that you guys have been working on, but there's some that are really faded.
Let me, let me.
I think we're all 17 stop signs. We're going all over town checking them, and we just placed another order for another dozen. And the stop signs, they cost, you know, 2,100 bucks for 12 stop signs.
Exactly. It was a very expensive.
Thank you.
If you have any particular one, Counselor, just.
Yes, well, I'll just write some, because I, when I drive down the streets, you know, I see that they're really faded, but I'll get you at least.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gallegos?
Yes.
Can you give us the status on the subject matter of trailers that are at the free market and also behind the Knights Inn?
We have the trailer at the, down at the Macari Gonzales? That one is gone.
Yeah, not that one. The one near the free market?
Yeah, that's, that was the free market. Or is it up here on Grand?
It's on Grand. It's near.
Because I, that, I believe, was the Pinon property, private property.
Okay. Did they have permits to put a trailer there?
We had sent out, we sent out our code enforcement and checked to see whether they had the permits or not, and so that's where we're at right now. But the one at Macari Gonzales property was, there was also one there, and we had that one removed. There was also one on Pinon Street, Pinon and Montezuma, and we're just waiting for one of the wrecker services to pick it up and take it and store it as well.
And what about behind the Knights Inn?
The Knights Inn, I don't remember. I don't know if we addressed that one, but I will address it this week.
People are living in these trailers?
Yes, they are.
I don't know if that's legal or not.
Well, we're even trying to address the tents that are down at the.
River Walk.
At the River Walk, and so we're addressing those as well, and trying to, seeing what we can do, trying to send them to Samaritan House, trying to find shelter for them. The Samaritan House is still, is operating. Billy has been in contact with him, and so we'll have an update on that one as well.
Understood. They got vandalized?
I don't know. I agree.
What about the animal welfare?
Animal welfare, animal welfare shelter got broken into on Sunday evening.
We got a report from the animal shelter on Monday morning that they were broken into on Sunday night. They cut the fence on the backside, and they busted up nine kennels, and we've already repaired it all, so they're back in, fortunately.
Were their dogs kidnapped, or were they?
No, they were five dogs taken.
Taken, meaning?
They stole, they stole the five dogs.
So sad. Thank you.
Anything to? Counselor Casey? Thank you. I just have two items. The first one, I want to thank Wanda Salazar for the wonderful work she does at the senior center. In reading your report, your monthly report, I actually really felt kind of sorry for you, because you do so much. It's like, oh my gosh, she's even serving meals. And so I just want to thank you for the hard work that you do. I think you do an excellent job there. I've been to the senior center several times myself, and I'll be going again there for a literacy book giveaway soon, and so I look forward to that, and I just want to thank you publicly for the good work that you've done. The other issue, Madam Mayor, is for you. On the lodger's tax board, I know that there are three persons who have sent in their applications, a long query.
And they're still coming in, so that's a minute wait. Hopefully till tomorrow, and hopefully make a decision by Friday. There's people that have called, and I'm waiting for their letters. I'm going to give them for one more day, and if they don't, then by Friday, I should be able to make a decision. I've not forgotten, and I have been working on that. There are a couple. They told me they did submit the letter, but I have not received it, so I checked to be during today, and I'm not certain if that letter has come in, but this is.
I did receive a copy of one letter that came in, and then two other people who talked to me personally, and said that they were very much interested, or had written you letters.
Yes. I have to worry about five or six, and then I, you know, I have to spread that wealth. So I'll be looking at it very, very carefully.
Thank you, because I think it's really important to get that.
We'll have to make a decision by tomorrow, except everybody's, like I told you, this one individual who is a very prominent businessman, did submit a letter, but I have not received it. So I'm going to check tomorrow, if I have to go to his place and ask what I have.
And the last thing is, I was looking at the code enforcement, and please, Madam City Manager, please thank Jeremiah, because I had, of all the awards that were listed, I had the most that have been worked on, and I really appreciate that, because people just call me every single day almost on some of these properties, and so I really appreciate him doing that, and, you know, I hope that he continues working on those and not give up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I guess I'm jealous of Counselor Casey.
I count them.
Those are mine.
Seventeen.
I have a few of mine that I don't even list at all, so I don't know enough yet, but my concern was with code enforcement. I think you mentioned one in the Montezuma and Pinon.
Montezuma and Pinon, it was that one trailer.
Okay, okay. So that was one of my questions. Another one, I have a constituent that, and I know I might have to go, if I can, and go show you, the one-way, the one-way issue on Jackson, on Jackson and Lincoln Streets?
Yes, sir.
That's been brought to your attention?
No. Is it, what's the issue? Is that?
Just the way that they're laying.
Oh, okay.
Bad positions.
Sure.
So maybe I could go with you, and we could sit on that and take care of that. And then the other thing, Paulville's, I know it's most coming around, and I think I talked to you on South Gonzales. I went a couple days ago, but I hadn't seen.
They're just in town today.
Okay. I just, you know, especially those bus routes, the buses start going through them, they'll tear them up.
Okay.
And that's it for now?
Is that it?
Please tell us. I'm sure we're going to continue for a long time. Are we done?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one more.
Okay.
Some of the residents that, on the west side, some of the residents are, some of those residents are living on, just on their homes, and don't have any facilities at all, like trash or water or anything. I'm going to have to give code enforcement, give you some addresses on that.
Okay.
You know, and they have trash outside their premises and all that. I'll get you at least on that and get back to you on that.
By our means, too.
Counselor. Just, I don't know, would this be PD as far as a big issue, especially in the west part of town, where the roads are narrow, parking on sidewalks, are we kind of addressing that or not? I'll look into it. And it's, I mean, it don't only happen in my world, it happens in all much. The street? Not street specific, just in general, if we're addressing that. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want me for executive session?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor, come in.
I make. I make a motion to enter executive session after personnel matters is permitted by section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Community Act, and then we see one.
Okay. Okay, we do it. And what precisely are we discussing?
Of being on personnel matters.
Just an update on all personnel matters?
Personnel matters that have been addressed in the past.
Oh. Okay. Thank you. We have a second. Welcome.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Yulubri Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Romero, and a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I want to leave. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.